... Because we have realized that field fires cause serious social and economic, including environmental damage. It is precisely for this reason that we are holding these public hearings. And the reason why we are here, we are to derive your esteemed inputs to formulate and promote a law. This law will speak to our national and local circumstances. At this moment, let me introduce my colleagues to you. From my right there, I have got Honorable Mkhunu. She is a member of parliament, serving in this committee. And the member of the African National Congress. Then, next to me here. I've got Honorable Paulson. You know he's a member of the EFF. Serving in this committee. Next to me here. I've got Honorable Mudise. Who's a member of the committee and the member of the African National Congress. The colleague next to Honorable Mudise. It's Honorable Dave Bright. A member of this committee, member of parliament and member of the Democratic Alliance. My name is Faith Mutambi, I'm the member of this committee, the chairperson of the committee. Then, I once again want to thank you for coming in these numbers. Then, let me hand over to Honorable Paulson. We'll share with you the procedure we are going to follow in making oral and written submissions. Over to your colleague.
Dumela Mwodalestulo, dit o tsakometi ya portfolio. Greetings to the chairperson and the members of the portfolio committee. Members of the local municipal council, district council. Traditional leaders. And the traditional leaders. And the council of. And the community of Fesile Dabi. Thank you. We appreciate your presence. We are here to listen. This is your parliament. And you should use this opportunity to have your voices heard. We are here to listen to your oral submissions. You can also hand over a written submission to Tay Leke. She's the first lady here on my, on that side. To start, the chairperson will ask you by a show of hands if you would like to make an oral submission. You will then be asked to form a row there, where you see the microphone. When you take the microphone. You will introduce yourself. And start by saying whether or not you're supportable. You will then proceed to elaborate on your submission. Your submission can be as an individual in your personal capacity. As an organization. A political party. A civic organization. Or as farmers. The written submission can be done on the form in the documents that was provided to you. If you don't have the form. You can get the form from Tay Leke. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Honorable Paulson. This is how we're going to do it. You see behind here, there's this road that's going there on your, this road, where this, you can stand up. Yeah, you see where, so that's the road that is showing you. I'm going to request you from the second row, going the other way around. If there's anyone of you who wants to raise issues with us. To occupy those seats up to the end there. And then as, when one person finishes speaking, you continue to move down. Can I see show of hands in this block? As you raise your hand, can you start moving to those chairs? Are you coming to ask a question, buddy? You shouldn't sit there, sit in that chair unless if you're coming to ask questions. We'll raise issues, sorry. You want to take the back and lift, there's a form that you need to sign first. We'll wait for you to complete there. You can use the chairs on your. I know, you follow the other one, we know you're coming after the other. Do I only have three people thus far who want to speak? This side, I wonder what you want, just come as well. If you want to speak, come to this room. Are you done with the paperwork? You have heard you need to introduce yourself. If you are coming from the structure, mention the structure. If you are representing yourself, you tell us the community where you come from. I can hand over to you, sir.
Gidion Kutsia, kom van Vrederfort de strakaf, veri boeren. Gidion. Gidion. Veri boeren, van Vrederfort. For the farmers from Vrederfort. Grond enaars moet brandbanen maken en langzele terpaaien ook schoensnij. Landowners must create a design. A fire breaks. And have to clean the tar roads also.
You see, I'm finally hearing you speaking, you must remember you are here to interpret.
Why must we be the ones to do it, but if there's a fire that spreads from your side to the other side, then we are in trouble? The department of roads or whatever you call it, they don't do it and they always say there's no money to maintain or build roads. And then the devastating fires that you're talking about? We use our own resources to extinguish these fires without any assistance or any help from any department from the government. And then you're talking also about the climate change. Climate change is niks van die moeilijkheid wat ons krijg die er veld brandt. Climate change doesn't compare to the troubles that we get from these failed fires. The problem comes in when you get the protesters that start these fires. There's no consequence when it comes to these protesters that start these fires, they're only being broadcasted on TVs, but nothing happens to them, there are no consequences. Why are these people not being arrested if they can see the faces on TV? Thank you.
Sir, are you supporting the bill or not? He supports the bill, okay. Part of the bill. And then you don't tell us which one you don't support. Oh, I see, I hear you. Okay, you're welcome.
I would like to greet all the people who are in this meeting today. My name is Jacob Fussis Tave. I come from Fesile Dabi district in Frederford. I support the bill. We are beginning to see the transparency that was lacking in a very long time. And the cooperation that we need as South Africans. I also would like to thank the leadership that is present here today. Oh, that is showing the rainbow nation. We have been seeking or needing this for a very long time. We like, we always like to be part of the decision-making process in South Africa as South Africans. Because those decisions that are taken end up affecting us as the citizens of South Africa. By some events that are happening. I support the bill very much. I would like to dwell much on the contents of the bill. The company that I'm representing is? Innovation Solutions Tech Team. Innovation. As you mentioned indeed. We believe that we are a part of the community in the company. We are focused on the agricultural sector. Where we often experience field fires. Even if we're coming from the townships. We must participate. So that we can get the skills, so that we can be able to deal with the fires. By way of workshops in order to deal with these failed fires. It is my main request, my leadership today. And to the community gathered here today. Previously, there were some fires. Our people were taken to extinguish such fires, but they ended up being hurt because they lacked the necessary skills. So we are here to make some requests to the leadership that is present here today. To be included in the programs for capacitation in dealing with failed fires. We also would like to make a request to the white farmers. So that they can be able to capacitate us as black people, so that when we encounter such situations, we know what to do. Because what is happening is a challenge to all of us, not necessarily to the government only. So we need to work together so that whatever situation that is coming up, we are able to deal with it together. In those words, I thank you. Thank you, the next speaker.
Thank you, Chair, thank you for the opportunity, I'm gonna change to Africans right now. My name is, my name is Yoanter Blans, I'm from Goudveld FPA. I'll talk Africans and you talk English. May I talk Africans? Agree, thank you very much. So, so it was not at the party yet last night. Okay, thank you, let's try again, one, two, three, okay. My name is Yoanter Blans.
My name is Yoanter Blans. I'm an official from. Goudveld Fire Protection Association.
I'm the fire protection officer. Okay, my brandvereniging is the grootste brandvereniging in the Free State.
My firefighting unit is the biggest one in the Free State.
And we've got, daar is veertien dorpen wat in my brandvereniging val.
We have fourteen towns that falls under my firefighting unit.
Um, ja, I can it noom. We'll begin by Botaville.
Botaville, the first one.
Weselsbron.
Weselsbron, the second one.
Woldfontein.
Woldfontein.
Brandvoort.
Brandvoort.
Verkerifley.
Verkerifley.
Winburg.
Winburg.
And then, then is it Ventersberg.
And then Ventersberg.
Henemann.
Henemann.
Virginia.
Virginia.
Welkom.
Welkom.
Oendalsris.
Oendalsris.
And then Ellenreach.
And then Ellenreach.
Ik is jader 2006.
Since 2006, I was.
Is ik die incident bestierder bij meer als de 1000 firen.
I'm the incident manager at more than a thousand fires.
So ik bij hier alle fire wat in die area is.
So I control all the fires in the area.
And I can say.
And I can also say that.
Dat ons ook die municipalitys, die brandweerswerk moet doen.
That we also do the municipalities' fire brigade work.
Ons gaan naar firen toe wat bij die op paaien gebeur, op die N1 en op die R30.
We go to fires that are started on the, in the N1 and the R30.
So dat is karre vrachtmoters wat aan die brand slaan.
So we're talking about vehicles that are set on fire on the roads.
And, 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 um, ons groot probleem is nie land climate nie, or climate change.
And the biggest problem that we have is not climate change.
Ons probleem is die de departement.
The problem that we have is the department.
Se officials wat nie al werk doen.
And the officials that are not doing their job.
Ik staan vandaag hierzo, ik is nie genoei die Free State's official om hier te staan. Ik weet per ongeluk gewoon hier is een vergadering.
I'm standing here without being invited by the officials of the department, so I'm standing here by hearsay on the streets, that's how I got to know that there's a public hearing going on here today.
Ik staan ook hier om vandaag te say dat ons als Goudveld het talle briefe gestier aan die minister, Minister Kresje, as ook aan Deff bij hoofkantoor.
I'm standing here and I want to say that we have written a lot of letters to the department and Deff also, but no response up until now.
When, wanneer ons een brief schrijf aan Minister Kresje?
And when we write a letter to the Minister Kresje?
Then, antwoord, zij antwoord net ons die brief onthang.
They just answer that we've received the letter.
Dan of zij zal zeggen hier, julle praat met Mel Laseki.
Of she will say no, I will refer to you, Mel Laseki. Madam, maam Laseki.
But, we wrote, ons schrijft die briefe, maar ons krijg geen antwoorden niet.
So we write these letters with no response.
Dat, dat, dat is die grootste probleem, ik woon rambestiersvergaderings bij.
And that is the biggest problem that we have because I'm attending different meetings.
Now, we're attending disaster management.
Disaster management meetings.
Where the provincial verteworiger, niesteworig is nie.
Where the provincial representative is not even present in those meetings.
So, voorzitter, wat ik wil say is.
Chairperson, what I want to say is.
Ons het een wonerlijke brandwet en daarom ondersteun ik jullie veranderingen wat julle wil maken.
We have a wonderful fire act and that's why I'm supporting the changes and the amendments that you want to bring about.
Die probleem is die SOEs, state-owned entities.
The problem is the SOEs.
Kom, kom nie na die partijke toe nie.
They're not coming to the table, to the party.
So, alle gronde, alles nie lid van die brandvereniging nie.
They're not members of the fire protection association.
Entities that you are referring to, yeah?
Uh, the, the state, uh, the mensen wat ons die meeste, die grootste probleem hebben.
The people that we have the most problems with are the following.
Is die municipalityt wat nie lid is van die, van die FPA nie.
Is the municipalities that are not members of the FPA.
And then, and then all the other states departments that have land. Dat is, dat is paaien en dat is transnet.
There is the roads, it's transnet.
And then, ja, Escom, Escom.
And then Escom also.
Ja, ik, ik wil het vandaag baaien duidelijk stel dat julle moet kennisneem.
I want to state it very clearly today, I want you to take note of this.
Dat Escom registreert servietied oren boers grond.
Escom issues a certificate over a farmer's land.
Elke servietied, ja.
Servietied, sorry.
Elke pauw wat op die grond staan is een potentiële probleem voor een brand wat kan stig, wat gestig wordt omdat Escom nie oneroerd doen.
Every pole that is found, that is on the land of a farmer's, of a farm, it poses a risk and it creates an opportunity for fires.
And, and wanneer dat dan groot skade is, ik doe veldbrandonderzoek of veldfire investigations.
I do veldfires investigations and when we have this big distractions or fire damage.
Ja, daar, ik ga net een voorbeeld noemen, bij Bosso was een groot veldbrand.
I will just name an example, at Bosso, we had a huge veldfire.
Daar heeft 53 plaatsen afgebrand.
Fifty-three farms were damaged in the process.
Die totale skade was 27 miljoen rand geweest.
The total damage was twenty-seven million rand.
Die, als ons naar Escom toe gaan.
If we go to Escom.
Medie claim, medie ice.
With a claim.
Dan is het een lang gesloer, julle wil nie voor ons help nie, en ons moet heel tijd rechtslijk gebruik.
And, when we, when we submit a claim to Escom, it's a whole long process and we have to make use of legal aid to expedite the process and to fasten the process.
Jy moet verstaan dat wanneer een boer gebrand is, wanneer se jelle plaats afgebrand is.
You need to understand when a farmer experiences a fire on his farm.
Hij does not, hij het, hij nie geld om rechtslijk te krijgen.
He doesn't have the money to get legal aid.
Hij moet voorkoop voor zijn dieren waar hij voor ontstaan en kijk en wat gebrand is.
He needs to buy fodder for his animals, that is standing there, on the farm.
And, and dat is een groot probleem, Escom bewoord vanhiger, zij skade wat hij veroorzak het uit te, uit te betalen.
And that's a big problem because Escom needs to fasten the process of claims being submitted to compensate these farmers who lost their land during the fire.
So, voorzitter, as, as ik kan voorstel, als julle die wet kan deerkrijen.
So, Chairperson, if I can make a suggestion.
Als julle die wet kan deerkrijen in goed keer.
If you can pass this law.
Then moet die, die SOE zo gauw als mogelijk lid word van die gerегистreerde brandvereniging van die area.
The SOEs must be members of the registered FPA's of that areas.
That's, that's right, ja. And then moet julle meer competent mensen aanstel.
And you have to appoint more competent people.
In julle departement.
In your department.
Wat ons kan antwoord als ons probleem is en wat nou situaties kan kom kijk.
People that can answer our queries and they can look at our situation out, out there. Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you so much, sir. We sincerely appreciate this constructive input by yourself. Indeed, this act is meant to make sure that all state-owned entities and state organs. Must play their part. The other issues that you have raised in relation of people not attending the disaster provincial disaster management meetings. These are the matters we are going to raise with the premier of the province. So that then they do attend because those meetings are very critical. As for the letters, we've got Shileka, you can copy those letters, Shileka is going to give you the email address. Copy all the letters that you have sent to the minister. Then you can follow up with the minister as to what's going on.
Que tla la dela letuna kama ngolo aina ilia ngolo akapijaa.
Okay, if there are matters that relate to service delivery in this though, we don't want you to deviate. But as and when you speak, that, that's why the acting mayor is here. At the end, I'll give him an opportunity to.
Hay ba hule ding, dingongore oze ma ba pili pepele eadi tsebelezo. Cheleka di kenye helezo na, eh, MMC utemona otlar arabelle, kete lo niakopa.
And then maybe will assure us that they are attending the disaster management meetings as expected as well.
Mshomu otlar anete faleza lore eba ka rolo eadi ko panoteo za disaster managementi hap.
Can then hand over to you.
Tati.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Neo Randuba, I'm from Kwakwazi Kopis.
Libitola kaki Neo Randuba, kitzwa Kwakwazi Kopis.
Firstly, I would like to, um, point out challenges that we are facing as a community.
Ki ba ta pami sa, di pepezo zeo rechebanen lezo na relesa chaba.
In, in our, in our communities, we facing, we dealing with fireworks who are not well trained.
Tulon nyaro na rechebanen leba se di timamolo, ze sa kuetli swanga tshwanele.
We've, we've watched houses burn while standing with fireworks doing nothing.
Ri le ra shebe la matlo, achari eme moholi di timamolo, ze sa itzin leto.
Uh, the problem seems to be, to be lying with, uh, the, they do not have, they do not do fire drills. They don't often do fire drills at work.
But that, uh, uh, bo na hala, ele taba ya zu selezo ya buitzebele bao zebao di timamolo.
And then, uh, another thing, by the way, I support the bill, I support the bill.
Tarelo, kete heza bili.
And then one things, certain things we would like to see in our communities that.
Ze diinza diin tozeo rela kaza mudi bo na se chabensaro na.
The, these fireworks you are referring to, are they private or, eh, municipal officials?
They are municipal.
Is it district or?
Local, local municipal.
Fire services.
Fire services, yes.
No, the acting mayor is here, we left to talk to that, we wanted to understand which ones.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, proceed Neo.
Okay. And then another challenge we are facing is, uh, our small farmers in our, in our communities.
Emwe pepezo kika.
And even in.
Ba, ba, bo, bo rapulasika ba ba limi ba sanzen ba hasa kahara se chavasaro na.
They, they are struggling because of failed fires in, in, in our communities.
Baba li pepezo e huluma ba pili di lha ha kahara tulotza ro na.
And as Nata just spoke now, and they are also being faced with challenges of not having enough food. To, 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 to feed their animals in the township and government.
Pepezo e abon na kahara di township umon kithoke ho ya di yo kapofuru ya di pofo.
And then government is not stepping in, even local government is not stepping in to assist those small farmers.
Me muso ali hayelu onaha oke nele otlatusa ba limi bao basa has.
And another thing I would like to put emphasis on is deforestation.
Emwe intho eki ba ta ngohatella kayo na ku horengwa hamiru.
And deforestation must only be done for agricultural purposes only.
Horengwa hadifate kapo hutuso hamiru iluke la ho ba mulimongwa.
Watimo.
Watimo feela.
Yes, and then another thing that needs to be regulated is road construction.
Emwe intho eluke la ngo laoloa kitabaka ho e amibila.
Uh, road construct, uh, construction companies, they leave out, uh, oil, oils by the road. And all tires and all these things and those things are, are the very same things that are causing fire in the field.
How it's amibila hunalo rohusi we di intho kapo matla kala eba, eba ka rolo e patla laza melo kapo hadi leza tshwara melo di etza re ikekele lo fe.
And one thing I would like to, to say to government is that, uh, farmers. Who, whose, whose agricultural crop, crop land has been down. And more often government has not come in to intervene or to subsidize those people.
Se oki ba ta ngo sibua hapekore ba limi ba liman dijalo, hay ba dijalo zeo di chile, muso ha otli.
Udiyo ba tuza.
The government is taking long to assist the people.
So we are asking and urging government to please prioritize that because the very same crop that are being burned down, regamo we eat from that.
We plead with the government to quickly assist those farmers because we also live on those plants that have been burnt down.
Really.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Nata Neo, we are parliament, not government, but will convey your message to the government. And then we want to thank you for your constructive inputs. Next speaker.
Uh, Kia Leboha.
Thank you.
Uh, Libitola kaki Stephen Yamande.
My name is Stephen Yamande.
I wa wana mona Fezile Dabi.
I stay here in Fezile Dabi.
Uh, trotoa ning ebitoan dueling ma falanee.
In a small town called Dueling ma falanee.
Uh, Kia support a bili.
I support the bill.
Uh, fela ki na lenongore ho ho ba ni, uh, moteo parliamente ne mo romela lezi dueling.
But I only have a few, a few concerns because the person that parliament has sent to, to Dueling did not get there.
Joale, hakia konao ba la bili ena kabutla alo.
So I could, I couldn't manage to read the, the whole bill.
Joale ne ke ko pa feela ho re, uh, refumanee di emaili kapo di contact detailsi. Ho re haritke ta oba ba la bili enana, rekoné ho romela di inputi haketsebeleka di fumanaka di contact details, Kia Leboha.
My only request is for us to be given contact details, email address. So that after we have gone through the whole bill, then we can submit our written submissions, thank you so much.
Okay. Thanks for coming.
Raleboha, how, how, how funny ho ba ten, Raleboha.
Okay, the next speaker.
Sibuisela telam.
Hi, Kia Leboha, muy fo.
Thank you, thank you delegation.
Kia Leboha, but in ba parliamente ho ba se chavi.
Thank you for parliament to, to having to, to be here in, uh, in the public.
Ken tue bo shoko.
This is very important.
Ken tue pami sama ikutwa ro na.
This will really inspire us.
Uh, now, mlibitso ki motalepula, ki na la ma bitso ma nga tempa keta swisala motalepula, si bo ko ketsu tesi.
I am motalepula tso tesi.
Kela maspalinwa Mafube.
From Mafube municipality.
Moza ne woma nyani maspalinwa Cornelia.
In a small town called Cornelia.
Keta bela hape lu fuama ni, tlaa hori bu e hapeka di tose aka reza, njo leka di sevisi sili zo.
I'm grateful that you've given us the opportunity to also talk about other service delivery issues.
Ken se ke ko pa lesoarelo, ha ki na oke na tabensa, bili wa na lo na ki fumaneho na ya senseki kenah la ma di.
Apologizing in advance that I won't dwell much on the bill because I only received it when I entered here.
So, ha ki supi mona na feela se kempa kela isareta isha ba kamera.
I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, I'm just saying I will, I'll go through it at a later stage.
Uh, renale challengesera sima na Cornelia.
We have a serious challenge in Cornelia.
Ma tata ko shoka mobua di pofo lente ya di pofo mo di janete.
We don't have land for where we can keep our animals.
Common age ya ro na ni nyana ha holo.
Our common age is very small.
Ma tata man ki dump inside.
Other problems are dumping size.
Di bo la di pofo.
Which kill our animals.
Di bo la ya bo kilobaro na.
And our livelihoods as well.
So ki challengesera senali ni ona.
That's the biggest challenge that we are faced with.
Ya bo be di hape ki ho shoka metsi.
We, we lack water, there's no water in Cornelia.
Metiri afuana toa Frankfurt.
The water that we get is from Frankfurt.
Ma tata ko pipita ro na now and then di, di blast ya di sevisi ba tabana metsi.
Most of the time our palms are bursted, so we spend many more time without water.
Renale keshile bitsoa ngo na mona Cornelia la Mahashuli.
We have a township called Mahashuli.
Le keshile laha leka monaka, moza niwa re time di.
And an old location called.
Ba tu ba Mahashule ba shoka metsi for three weeks.
Uh, ma, people staying in Mahashule will go for, for three weeks without any water.
Ki section ya ki bua ngana na Mahashule.
That's the section that I'm referring to.
Ba shoka metsi for three weeks.
They would go for three weeks without water.
Baya udi mulela se ba suku na.
And then they struggle.
So ki ma tata renale mo ona.
Those are, are issues that we have.
Re ko pa ro muso lo shebe ta ba za mufuta ona.
Please government see to it.
Isiria so ba na sen toya kajino. Repilaka loudspeaker yeta ma milai le milai.
There's always a loudspeaker that is running around.
Ha feza, ha feza, metsi ha yo pipita.
That, that informs us that the pipe has burst and the, the.
Isiria maspala bitsoa ma spala wa pipita buha kesechama.
The municipality is even called the municipality of a best pipe.
Ha sa olu isai side announcement, pipita.
Once we receive an announcement, it's about a best pipe.
So di sebelezo ha diu di afoko ona.
We don't have any services.
Repilaka di dumping site mo di clinic in sa ro na, let's say dumping site.
There are, there are dumping sites everywhere, even inside our clinics.
Ki di problem senali zo na.
Those are some of the problems.
Repilaka environmenting is in right.
Our environment is not conducive for living.
So you're the solution na neki ba ta ho tshaka, ona iki tsebo zo apusuo otlaba prosa bole bo puso ro.
I, I want, I, I want to suggest a solution if I'm allowed.
Or Cornelia re ko pa, aile wa di reservoirs ilinza Cornelia.
We need reservoirs in Cornelia.
Re ko pa muso re tu se kamho ka hona la.
Please government assist us in every way that you can.
Ma reki ba ta oleba di men's it's in di lete what counselor or a kenye di jojo, Raleboha, alima.
But we are thankful about other, uh, that the counselor, we have, uh, jojos.
Joale, ne serio ko pa hermuso uto shebe di dumping site di pofo di achoa, re ko pa re tu se kataba ya lente, ha holo ki ona bo tata bo renale mo na.
Please, please look at issues of, of, uh, dumping size and the land, we also need land.
Ya o kete la ki na kaka tanbuaka ona. Ba tuaya che loa ki ma torva shebe ye na hadiya cha.
People, houses, burn, the felt.
Di panpi ri di tu amo oche so antini dumping site, ni di tuleleka mona kana e di chise, na ya ro na.
The, the papers from the dumping sites will be flown by the wind to the field and then it causes failed fires.
The firefighter re tola ozoa Frankfurt, ma spala ma Mafube.
The firefighter that will assist us is only from the, from.
Ntorei bo ne kaufiti sa, wa fumanasone zo ho chile ulu isaba fe.
When they get.
It's about sixty cases, seventy cases.
When they get at our, at, at our area, the fire has already ravished everything because it's around sixty kilometers.
Joale, tla isoa kanelo ro muso re tu so ro ka hona ala parliamente ho re, ho be na li di timamolo, leba tuva tre no, ho re ba honu tuza ba tuva ba. Situation ago cha, har na metsi, ha le honu tuza ka niks.
I'm appealing, I'm appealing to the government that we need firefighters who are well trained. So that they can assist when there's fire in our area.
So membaka re ko pa hori holo na kati tuwa kataba di reservoir, re tu se kataba na ya firefighters, please.
Reservoirs and firefighters are the main issues that we, we need assistance on, thank you so much.
Uh, Raleboha, Nata Tswatasi.
Thank you, Nata Tswatasi.
Thanks for coming.
Raleboha, ho ba ten hahao.
The issues of the service delivery at Mafube would convey the message to the premier and the relevant emissary.
Diin chatza paniadi tsebelezo, ma ni Mafube re tla di fitisa ta ho premi, umu premieri.
The issue of dumping size, it's within our competency, we are going to look at that.
Ta tabaya di dumping site, ti kibika arabelle oba ro na re tla ya shebana Leon.
Okay, then can we allow the next speaker?
Nata Okabua.
Uh, kidume isaketa pila ro na etin, kara ro na zazina.
Greetings to our leadership.
Uh, kidume di sileschaba sa ro na setting, kakua no la, eh, di maspalin se fapani kakaka.
And the community at large from different municipalities in the district.
Eh, lena ki tebo ele mu ya tla uku fu ya zazina kashino.
I'm, I'm grateful for the opportunities that is afforded to me.
Ho re ki nte ma ikublo, kela ya kahara se chaba.
So that I can also say my views because I'm a community member.
Uh, libitola kaki motea bitsoa Tediwa Narampore.
My name is Tediwa Narampore.
Uh, kela ya moza niwa Matuan Twang Stensres.
I'm from a small town of Matuan Twang Stensres.
Uh, ki wuili di bui zenga ta di buile.
I heard many speakers have, have, have said something.
Uh, joale, le ro na ma ni, uh, moza niwa Stensres Matuan Twang.
Even us at Matuan Twang Stensres.
Uh, renale challenge ona na ya oche sa ki support a bili ina.
We have a challenge of failed fires, I therefore support the bill.
Ho ba ni joale, uh, intue e ki bizan challenge ahulu ba den sa di tuta, se di ma ni le fatina Stensres en Matuan Twang. Uh, challenges eh, he tu la na zo na, uh, la Stensres Matuan Twang, se ngakabata ngo di peya kapela, uh, geta.
There are a few challenges that we are faced with at Matuan Twang.
Uh, how ocha intuaya bili ha hona di timamolo.
We don't have firefighters in, in Stensres.
Uh, re tu sa ki bo nta te bana ba de farmers, ho ba ni joale, bana li di pei di se na zebo na ba hoo na mutima, katzo na maplasing, how ocha?
The white farmers are the ones who assist us because they have the proper equipment.
Joale, how ufula na la ba hule, ha holo ba diaya ufe, oto tu sa ka mo.
If they, they come from afar, then it takes a long time for them to, to, to get to our area.
Joale, oto lo ro tutaya se ne ya, be a sa tu li tu so.
Then that, the damage be, becomes so severe.
Joale, ka ho, eh, ma ni seba gensekula onso na ha hona, me sebe ti eti ti se.
Because at Stensres, there are no stable jobs.
Oto lo ro di pofo, zanekzo na zegi pidi sa ngau di slokome la.
Our livelihood, our livelihood depends on these animals.
Joale, oto ale hatu tai chile, but that Iki ona tabaina ya peb, ofula no harhuni, ho feb.
Once the fire, once the felt has bent, we, we have a challenge of animal feed.
Joale, emwe hape ni kiba ta ve laisa kapela geta bili etin kwanu.
Another challenge is.
Uh, hona li di tota mo no ze ri di bizan, eh, di common age.
There are, uh, there's a land that is called common age.
Joale, di toda zena li di demo, oto lo ma spala hangi kibika arabelle lo kabutla alo, ba ho re abonore, oto tu sa ka mo kazele jo.
The municipality does not take responsibility of assisting those common ages.
Ho ba ni joale, ta bo sa zibina di zamai shoa, ki bo ma.
Because you don't know who manages them.
Bali zizi hu ma.
Who, who they have missed from.
Joale, how ocha, oso antu bene le motea na lebi karabelle oba ho re, azama espo ni se mshomu, abu le nie we, ya oche sa.
Once the fire broke there, there has to be someone who will, who will have to go to the police to report that the fire, there's a failed fire.
Joale, oto lo ro tutadi chisoa fe la me obusna, wi karabelle lo, le ma spali ngawee na otsi ba ha ki li Stensresi, ntoza mo lo di crostar.
In Stensres, we depend on crostat, most of our resources are at crostat.
Joale, oto lo ro bui emongo joale, le ro na re leba tu religi, haritsebe ro na re tlaesa, joan go ba ni, inseli intuinta diaketa ngubua kayo na re ne. Challenge ahulu nseba metsi ha hula, how ka tui reka tuza, ka di go li ze ro na re di palama, mshomu, reka bona re ngaba tu joan go ba tu se ka u di timamolo.
Even if we can, uh, we, we can provide our own vehicles maybe for people to can extinguish the fire, there's a problem of water in Stensres.
Joale, re, re ko pa geta bili, joale ka ba re fili mu ya tla ho re le, re bui le bo.
So, we, we, we really need our, your assistance as our leadership.
Ho ba ni, kan ne ti, ne ti, ne ti, me, eh, how bua kasa kasa kango Stensres, how sa rua di pofo, me, ki bua ka tla alo.
Because i, i, in a place like Stensres, if you don't have animals, then you're stuck.
Joale, kan ne ti, re le buile, eh, but in baba ona.
Thank you so much for your presence.
Uh, joale, kalida shipiya sa chula iti, uh, linda, diya ika arabelle la, majuro, uh, okametsin zazina kashino, ale etin kwan.
Since our ma, since our mayor is here as well.
Uh, ro na ba tuwa na di di pofo leba di, kakua no ka mona fala ya ni fatina Stensres Matuan Twang.
People who own animals from, uh, Stensres in Matuan Twang.
Ke ne re ko pa kan ne ti majuro haka tla to, identifier di tuta za di common age.
If only the mayor can come and identify common age land.
And then ha, uh, uh, identify the di common age land.
Once that has been done.
Re tsebe, re tla bana di di komiti, zeku ngawi karabelle obo ma, tla ba ho re di bo ne tuta ze, ha di chase.
Then we know that we will have people who will be responsible when the, the failed fire.
Eh, ki, ki, ki tla ngawi karabelle oba ba ni klasama, ki ma bo ne senki re motachi, uche si se ki mo.
It will be my responsibility because I will have been identified, then I will go to the police and report the fire.
Then ki tla biksa farmerspala, eh, but that, ha kaloka lo ba ni kia zebadu komiti, eti ni karabelle la, kara homenishi, joale, je reba ita bili.
Then the responsibility will be delegated to other people, uh, other than the municipality.
Kia le wili ha holo kasa kasa kisfu.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Raleboha, Nata, Raleboha.
Thank you, thank you, Nata.
The acting mayor is here, that they are going to respond to some of your issues. The acting mayor is here, they are going to respond to some of your issues.
Acting mayor oteng, ota arabela ditabenzete nse ubuile nka zona.
Can I remind the speakers five minutes?
Ki hupose di bui hori motoka mo, ulu ki ala uguame tu semehla nu fe.
And then don't continue to repeat.
Kenela peta peta, uhuile taba, iu kahe.
Like the previous speaker, ne, where I repeat, I repeat.
Iu kahe taba yeu.
Okay.
Toko, toko ba olewa, motutonyana saba kanyana, si kisi fu yenu, weyana kaplasa.
Thank you for the opportunity given to me.
Eh, kisale, kimo aiwasla anga, ro motuwa no Maduan Twang.
I'm also from Maduan Twang.
Eh, kisale buyane ya uhu di li mu, skampona kile mu di li leji.
I'm still very young, even though I'm so tall.
Yeah. Alright, libito laka getabo mokwai.
My name is Thabo Mokwai.
Yeah, eh, ki to supportabili.
I would like to support the bill.
Eh, kinali diro mu motuwa Stensres Maduan Twang.
I own cattle at Stensres.
Yeah, jole, kiasukola ha holo, luka na kuena ya selimo obano. I have forty-seven years. Yeah. Yes, yes. So, hakana na kifmano oru, le ibingoldu, le moba nono nzo houcha.
And a lighter note, you know what my colleague is saying? Because you have got more than forty-seven cows, it's a opportunity to take many wives.
At the age of twenty-five years. Alright, thank you, thank you. So, le moba, even lo, moba ni late, nozo nzo houcha.
Even yesterday, in the evening, there were feld fires around Stensres.
So, lisbagasere mu ora pila ngozona, moro kona ngo re nare, rebene lozona, ore kono re nare, jare zinlo zona kofe, se se nyana na ha hoo.
The land where we keep our animals is very small.
Yeah, ha holo kaseku disa taba, harana li, li, letame isu ente la baita pila ba ro, na baita pila ba ro, na renale butataka, kadipofola, ba bolelo ra, renale butata bucha na le bucha na kadipofolten, na ro klokan tuitele eti, ba referela crostatamo.
We don't receive any assistance from our leaders, when we tell them our problems, they refer us to crostat.
Dena refitla mo crostat, ha ona, ebidi re retolan.
Then coming to crostat, there's nothing better that will come out of your problem.
Eh, ba bolelo ra, ona nantoka bangai etza so.
They tell you that there's nothing that they can do, you are referred somewhere else.
So, kibona kari bigli tla retala mle.
So I think this bill will benefit us.
Eh, hori retale muli mu, tami eto le muli mo zahonapi, haya tami o sukulaka, na ore sakasukulaka yo. Hori sakasukulaka na kama, hori ki sukulaka, hori sakasukulaka yo na, ya tami hori sukulaka, eri ki zimshala.
For me to benefit from the bill, eh, the bill will also have to benefit from me.
Yeah, mka etza, mka etza mshala o simpo le nyana fe.
Example?
Yeah, kiri, kiwa tala, utola, eh, akirele faati.
If I want land?
Eh, mara yutu kona ore kile llokomela, hale geta oucha.
But I won't be able to take care of it?
Eh, kiri lechi, lechile jwa.
I will say that it has burnt down.
Yeah, so then, kibona, holo muli mo, re bili impetole bile impé holi, ah, holo mucho mo kata tolala, titi nte muli mo kama rasi.
I think when this bill is passed, we will benefit more from it.
Yeah, ki to kala tu, sakaka bukutu ya ne fe, na tokoba baita pila ba ro, na batu melo, ro na batu.
Please our leaders approach us, come closer to us.
Eh, bu nete re sokola ha hola, ona kahu di teta, ta selimo, wahacha, wetala nte tana kofe.
They are struggling a lot, especially during this winter month.
Ki enda pa ki, kieta decisionite lorenki, nte discipline inza.
I will end up making decisions that are not correct.
Alright, se ki lewile ha holo, haru hutsi Africa mo, Africa bo ra mo, la parlamenta ona mo.
Thank you so much, let's grow South Africa together.
Thank you.
Ralibo entate.
Thank you Thabo.
And we know you want to save God to your cows.
Rea sebele obatla sokomela di profolo saha.
It's impressive eh, to see a young farmer like you.
Thabi lekanit.
Yes, over to you madam.
Akile bua moniya tla uku fuwa. Thank you for the opportunity awarded to me. Kalibito, ki Monica Ranue. My name is Monica Ranue. Ketsla ama le Ramuluti Fijun Skron. I'm from Ramuluti Fijun Skron. Eh, renaji pepe to tanga ata. We have many challenges. Yapi le. The first one. Resukula, kaditsebele to ha holo. We struggle with service delivery. Katapila ona etamela huli lero. Our leadership, our leadership is far from us. Ki kahona, ilin haru, haru fu moniya tla ona berenza dilota ona kofe. That is why when we are given this opportunity, we raise everything. Yapi le bili eh, eh, buhoku, ha, 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 na di timamolo kaka Ramuluti. The most serious one is that we don't have firefighters in Ramuluti. Ntwengole mu, haru lloka tami le re, emelehutso crostat. Everything that we need, we will have to come from crostat. Asa kale skulos nesichaka Ramuluti kama. Not far away, the school was burning. Ki leka tamiya, ho ema, two to three hours. We had to wait for two to three hours. Kana ku mo lonso tuka. By that time, the school is busy burning. Fe la kalisana ona ona motuile ngato kuti. Fortunately, no one was hurt. Ya bo be adi. Secondly. Ma keshi na ona di tila. Our townships are dirty. Haru la katapili, niya ona ba jueta oru, bana di sebele. When we complain, our leadership tell us that they don't have the funds. Maraha ka tla, li fu mucho mo, lamu etapil. Should there be a funeral of a leader? Retlo ba ona kas tratasi krapu. The streets will be taken care of. Di tatala. Michini tlo bating, etlo kuluma kama ni tuteng. There will be equipment cleaning the feld. Marai itlinafela, porshini, yeu ya mo fe. But only the portion where the funeral is going to be held. Potso ya ona ki hori na. The question is. Michini eh, ibasiko, hasi chaba silla. Why are those machines not there when the people are crying? Empa hey le baita pila ba na lema tata dibati. But when the leaders have problems, suddenly the equipment is there. Butata bobo, ha uwa happy ba oshoya. And then when you are vocal, you are being targeted as well. Ya u kretela, na kina na kia bukloka. Renali klinikika rolikeshi. We have a clinic in the township. High sebele. That is not functional. Ikuetsu building eh, ikuetsu tutu jole, isafe tulela, ha la mashud. It's closed, it's like an old elephant. Ha, rasukula? A white elephant, I'm sorry. Ha, rena polistationika rolikeshi ni, enaka Ramuluti, otlaitso butso tiboba ngata. We don't have a police station in the township and Ramuluti has many criminal activities. Ha u funila mapone salo, ona ba kiki batwa kadi funisa ona. When you call the police, they don't answer their phones. Ha ba di araba, batala besalebe itse batala, ota roba lo butso. Once they answer them, they'll promise that they will come, but they never will. Ki supportabili? I support the bill. Ka je no, ki lewa wa ni majuro eti mani. Today, I am thankful because the mayor is there. Tate ki kopabu le ma councilor hahao. Please entate talk to your councilor. Lo eh, enaka sile saha, le majuro mokatsani atu melan batu. As well as majuro mokatsani come closer to the people. Eka re di sebele di shori tibua, ha uwa di reto, kama ra di reto arele to. We are only considered during election time. Come on, so kialebo. Thank you so much.
Ralibo ausi, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Do we still have people this side who wants to speak?
Anahosana lebatu ba batla ngubua kamo.
Liko, mi nde midin, are the people still want to speak?
Li mo hari.
Calm down here.
Haiba ona lebatu ba batla ngubua atamelan litro, kena di tulomona.
Okay, let's proceed.
Reta tso la pili he.
Kialebo.
Thank you.
Eh, libito, ki Alphonse Marabe Mariti, ki zo kama na kama tuwa Maduan Twang.
Libito laka ki Alphonse Marabe Mariti from Maduan Twang.
Eh, alimbona kile mona, isale kibatla obali plasi ka nineteen eighty-eight.
I've been longing to own a farm since nineteen?
Eighty-eight.
Eight.
Imba le ka je kunze ki sokola.
But even today, I'm still struggling.
Eh, kama ni kama Maduan Twang eh, di komoneji di te.
There are komonejes in Maduan Twang.
Imba batuwa nali zona na, batrainezwe eh, mu lo.
But then the question is, those people who own komonejes have not been trained to work on fire.
Na bana li zona, michini ya u timamolo na.
They don't even have equipment to extinguish the fire.
Eh, le, 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 li uhu mu di tenka kalkeshi.
There are cows also in the township.
Motu emo ona le uhu mu seka ba amte ti, wo ya udi.
One person will be having ten or more cows.
Jole kan tate ana buile.
Like entate has already.
Obani asa fui plasi, atu kaka kalkeshi.
Why is it that he's not given land so that he can move out of the township?
Hotle, hotle, batla ngamrao, batla ngututuwa kadi uhu mu se, seka tsa su ti.
So that upcoming farmers can also own their cows in the township.
Rakoba parlamenting, ha, ha, haru, ituse eh, batu ka, 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 di to.
Please.
Seba batla ngubato ona.
Please parliament assist people with everything that they need.
Lu jala, na ki arata ujala.
I also like growing crops.
Ena ujala, ki, 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 ki ufa paschaba.
And then growing crops is giving people some food.
Di pleka tsa roona kama no, we nte di ground tu eh, impa itedi ya mu di temo na, li mu bu, oka kanga osebele saha jala hu ona.
The land that is there, stadiums have been built, so there's no way we can.
Jole utala jala juan plasin, kuwe entu stadiumo, obapa lo.
So there is no way you can grow your crops.
Ki kahora tla nerbu eka tala, re tala, etenka rumatuan twang.
That is why we will, that is why we will always talk about food insecurity because people don't grow their own crops.
Eh, le zona duhu mu se, renale zon.
Even the cattle that we own.
Rakoba pleka, ereta jala fu, riskera shaba government, uhu fe pleka, ereta jala fu, ha uchila kona obali, le, le, di jota di uhu mu zaro.
We need land where we can keep our fodder so that when there are land fires, then we know that we have a place where we can go and get fodder from.
Eh, ba mahua ana le pleka, ba mo ba storan di jota ona te.
White people have a place where they can store their animal feed.
Eh, ibile ba kona, lu di jala.
They can even grow their own crops.
Ntwene kaseku su lo, ba ni twene itu, itu tuli ona.
We are born like that, so that cannot be approved.
Ti mogin tata ro ona.
We are born as farmers.
Refen pleka, kona ujala di jota di uhu mu, kona u, ukietsa ntwengole, kona storan tata ro na, kona osebele.
Give us land, please.
Rakoba.
We, we, we.
Kialebo.
Thank you so much.
Support the bill, entate, are you supporting the bill, entate?
Eh, ki kesa supportabili eh, le referentos a timamolo.
I support the bill, please give us equipment to extinguish the fire.
Ha, ki lebu esma kase uki suwa.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Kaufela parlamente.
I'm greeting all the delegation of parliament.
Kibona di le monje di chinchha.
I see years are going by.
Keta batze mona dobona parlamente.
It's good news to see parliament coming back to the people.
Libito laka ki Moike Titalin.
My name is Moike Titalin.
Ki zo a kile mu Mukaka.
From Mukaka.
Ki du la go di nuemoni.
From Dinwee.
Ki lebu esu bonan entate nsal.
Eh, I'm happy to see entate nsal.
Yapi le ki lebuwa, kibatla oru, ki supportabili.
Firstly, I support the bill.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
Jole, ki lele bu ekaufela.
I would like to thank you all.
Le batu ba timona.
And all the members of the community present here.
Tabaina ya ona ya di timamolo.
The issue of firefighters.
Asa parela obani, batu dilu holi, luntzera la ufiyama na ki matata.
Yeah, eh, they are far, but if things are closer, I don't think we would have encountered such a lot of problems.
Obani, ha ufo una ufo nila di timamolo.
When you call the firefighters.
Utola di ansasimara, batuwa na ba diya ufilka.
You get the answers, but people take long to arrive.
Ewu ya uvi di ki batla oru, keli maspala wa Mukaka, moniya kaji ona entate nsal.
Eh, secondly, as the people living under Mukaka municipality.
Ufuwe batuwa na bana di duhu mu ka kalkeshi no, opportunity oru, ba fuwe chansha apply for komonej.
Eh, the people who are owning cattle eh, inside our location, they must be given opportunity to apply for komonejes.
Le bakakore batuwa na ba ule di profolo ka kalkeshi ni, ba kala di maino hola sa jurisika ba majue.
Eh, these people who are having livestock in the location, they are blocking eh, surages with stones.
Lady pipe nza meti mona ba haola.
They cut off eh, water pipes.
Jole, taba yeu ki taba yeu soka haola obani, ki ona refa ma tata ka ro mageshi.
And that causes problems for us in the locations.
And we spato ona renale komoneji tepe di ka ro crostatamo na ksa fosi.
We do have two komonejes in the, eh, within crostat.
Jole, taba eh, uwi ki batla oto, hanyana na luketin, hanyana na kaka kopa, ki kopatsharelo.
May I deviate a bit from what we are talking about?
Karo maspalo lokanda enthalale te.
Eh.
Rakoba eh, ma councilora.
We would like to ask the councillors.
Le katapili karo ofisika mani.
And the leadership in the municipal offices.
Butata ko re renadi di sebele to zelo rin di tenka ro, ro kalkeshi ni.
We do have projects eh, at the location.
Just to bua fe la, osatze ba halo weta etin.
The projects are stopped haphazardly, we don't know why.
Nklapi le kia ukuwa loa meti hale keshi ni, batuva satze obani meti akua lo.
Water is being stopped and the community is not notified about that.
Ya uvi di kia uwe reporter juris, ibilo ona manu watfor, sebele regroupile.
We report about eh, surage spillages eh, and we have grouped ourselves there in working section four.
What for?
What for?
Rona self manu watfor, haru fo ni te maspala, adiyao tla do tibula, chukusikai tibula.
When we call the municipality regarding the surage, they take time to come.
Jole, ntebo soka jore, ha usebele ka community, kabo sebele ka sijahwa, sijahwa tante se tibene, twengole mu etla mu etala.
When you need the community, the community must know everything you are doing on their behalf.
Right, ki lewile, katabe zulo bona parlamente, te kara parlamente kata mshaina horo.
I'm, I'm so glad to see parliament visiting us, I, I, I think you will do it regularly.
Ki supporta, lipu ya ni me buile nyawo, skala tanga horo na haler shoka.
Eh, I support the lady who said, don't come to us if you want to use us only.
Thank you na duwebe la, skavata horo na haba reuse obani, sometimes haba vata di something ba ta horo na, haola ota ki.
Because when you need something, you come to us.
Ki lewile.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eh, ralibo entate totally.
Eh, thank you sir.
Eh, parlamenta kile, and then those issues that you have raised, the acting mayor will respond?
Eh, parlamenta emo, di nklatsa wile nka zona eh, mayora wa mukobobo, ota araba monkense.
And then, with that, the commitment as to when things are going to happen?
Eh, ota tla itla ama horu, te adibuang, di tla dirahala ne.
As, as a dirahali, the chileka there, you must contact chileka, will follow up on that.
Hasa di dirita di sepisang, honali ne chileka mona iko panya li ena, omulelo, mayorola adi dira dilotsi.
Okay, next speaker.
Ralibo, hala tela.
Eh, ki alibo.
Thank you.
Ki simuli ki mu sweni.
Eh.
Ki soha mafatlanin tui li.
Mu sweni from Mafatlanin.
Maspalimama fube.
From Mafube municipality.
Eh, bili re support eh, lebuwa.
We support the bill, we accept it.
Impa arnali butata chava samre.
But we do have challenges.
Ay salerelahu, tuaka, two thousand and eight.
We have been having a complaint since two thousand and eight.
Duhai te mafatlanin.
We are the farmers from Mafatlanin.
Kela garo maspala, garo tusu, huie ke tui kamposa maspala.
We have been requesting the municipality to provide us with farms, with camps and farms.
Kete lohanan zerela, ruwa kana tueno, baru hipati la plais, haru itose, re tla hobo ona rubajuis.
They told us to go and identify a farm and after finding a farm, we must come and tell them that where is the farm? I went to them, I told them that there is a farm on sale at a certain place. The response I got, it was so painful, it was so hurting. They said, "So what must they do?" It's a municipality by name. Our municipality is just a stooge because we never saw any action from that municipality. When we got problems, they don't assist us. When they want to use us for elections, the speaker will run day and night. What we are requesting is a minor thing, just to to see how the municipality can assist us with camps or fields. Every time when we had a meeting with the municipality, the answer is, "We don't have land." But the issue to solve this is easy. The municipality must approach the land affairs and the land affairs will identify the land and the land will be given to the people. The other thing, the mi- the municipalities' everyday answer is that we don't have money. We don't care about that, we are also poor. I'm happy that parliamentarians are here. We are being oppressed here, but thank you. Sir? We have heard you.
No, the next speaker, please.
I would like to thank the delegation. We are happy to see our government coming closer to the people. I think our pleas and our cries will be taken serious. I would like to take from the eh issue which was raised by my eh predecessor. When he spoke of camps. Sorry? From Fesile Derby? Mafube? Eh Villias Kalabucha.
Tade, ki hundred percent.
And I support the bill hundred percent. Eh I'm having a bitter taste in my mouth because eh the farmers of livestock, their livestock is suffering because of fires. We don't have enough camps. And we got lots of livestock eh in in our komenegis. We are requesting the government to buy us land, please. To extend or to eh augment on the land of the municipality.
Ah R twenty-six.
R twenty-six and entry. Many motor vehicles pass there. Our fence, our eh fence for our camps has been stolen. And eh sometimes the fence is also dilapidated. Big trucks, big trucks are passing by our camps and they they might cause a serious accident. My le- my main plea is about the farmers. According to the komenegi eh policy, it says, the komenegi policy says, "If your animals are more than thirty." There are three categories there? The third one. I'm not happy about the the third category. Because we need training about eh eh that category. Like myself? I've got eh more than fifty kettles. I made applications, I was assisted by white farmers that I must apply for getting eh more land such that eh my kettles can be accommodated because it's a large number. According to category three? No support is available. To be assisted? I've eh made five applications. Since two thousand till today. No assistance. Please, oh please. I'm supporting this bill. In our area, we do have dumping places, but they are well fenced. But during eh eh windy times, the the papers and plastic are eh flying over the fence. The livestock eat the plastic and they die. My livestock is a beef master. My problem is, I'm not assisted by land in order for me to farm further. Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Welcome.
I'm Lisa Fenter, I am the secretary of Mukaka Fire Protection Association. I first of all need to apologize for my chairman, my vice chairman and my fire protection officer. Fire protection officer. They cannot attend because there are also volunteers, just like me. Mukaka Fire Protection Association consists only of volunteers, there is no one that gets any pay. All of us, I'm sorry. To be a member of the eh of the Fire Protection Association, you need to pay a member fee. That is why it's so very important for the municipality to take part and actually come forward and speak. I can suggest that the municipality speak to councillor eh Johan Haldenais, better known as Spasky. Johan Haldenais?
Johan Haldenais.
Better known as Spasky. He is our chairman. He is also a ward councillor that does his work. And most of the problems mentioned here, as you as parliamentarians know, should have been discussed by the ward councillors and the ward councillors should have been putting pressure on the municipality. The people vote for the ward councillor to represent them in the municipality. And the ward councillor must then put pressure on the municipality. We also hear that one of the problems we have since we changed from eh the Department of Agriculture, Forestry and Fisheries eh to D F F E is that no longer does feldfires fall under the Department of Agriculture and Rural Development. And all of the problems discussed here?
No fires, are you saying no fires? Eh under the the current or the previous?
We used to be part of DEF, where agriculture department formed part of DEF. Now we fall under D F F E and agriculture does not fit in there. Agriculture forms part of the Department of Agriculture for eh agriculture and rural development? And as you have heard, all of the problems discussed here is actually the problem of the Department of Agricultural and Rural Development. Besides hearing that the problem is agricultural and rural development, I also heard that the people would like to be empowered to fight fires, I've heard this. The Mukaka Fire Protection Association do eh assist our members? Um Minister Creasy, who is our minister in feldfires, used to be the M E C of Education in Khauting. Maybe she can use the fire eh eh connections and her knowledge of education to actually form a way for us to train the people. Okay, our fire department is based in Kronstadt, Mukaka. Because of mismanagement by the municipality in the past, they are a struggling department. I can honestly say that the firemen we have in Kronstadt at the moment are people that I appreciate. And when I do attend a fire where they are, I have to really look up to them with respect. But they do not have the right equipment, the municipality do not supply them with the equipment. Um. The, there is no proper budget for the fire department. And it is true that the farmers in Staines Res, Valiums Cruen, eh Ramolotsi, all the areas around there, when there is a fire, they will attend. But please note that all our members are volunteers and they do not get refunded when they go out. They do not get paid for the diesel for their vehicle. They have to maintain their own vehicles. Have to maintain their own equipment. They have to spend their own time. If anything goes wrong on their equipment or their vehicle. They are not refunded. So to be a member of Mukaka Fire Protection Association is a very expensive trip. And when they go and do the municipality's work, it is sad. In Staines Res, we had a complaint last year. Our sector leader in Staines Res, Nas Fenter. Made a point of asking the municipality to clean the area so that the risk of fire is lower. But they did not. And so they, the farmers had to go out and help these people. I appreciate, Ntade, that you mentioned that it's true. Just to mention, um this sometimes is a problem in the inner workings of the Fire Protection Association. Um fires have absolutely no regard for the municipal borders. This sounds silly, but it actually has repercussions.
Eh, ukwala ekare eh ya tsehisa mara, ditlamorao zating, dibosho.
Mukaka Fire Protection Association is much wider than the borders currently by set by the municipality.
Juali, eh musebitso Mukaka omoholo hufeta, melilo anu kozati border sita diwe ilwe mo.
And this is for absolute practical reasons. Because a fire depends on geog- geography and not on the will of a political party.
Eh, mollo hau keita, hau noru wa wa pati fiin ora wa pati fiin, oh kaila bubuti.
I support the bill, but need to remind parliament that the majority of municipalities in South Africa is dysfunctional and cannot handle even water supply, as we've heard, or road maintenance, as we've heard.
Ke ma, ke ano king eh bilie fele, sesinku kisamutlo kore Maspo Maspala baba ngatamo na henyarona habasebe, haba kono ahadi zela, havakono tivelamelo.
Running a fire protection association needs people with a heart of dedication.
Juali he, hu bamu nekachonke ya ya oluansamelo, otlamele onne lepe loya lejwe, kono yamelanale mollo.
A heart of dedication to protect the community against fire.
Le hurupelloa, habatu hori bakone, hutusa monking ya oluansamelo.
And this is where I've heard the farmers speak. Rubbish that's lying around, the schoolchildren are, sorry.
Ki ukwi le Bora Plaza baba uaka yonatabea hori hona lihudi zila, dikolo, adi hantle.
And here maybe our minister can help us again. The schools are doing life orientation.
Eh, kodikolo kwa ekare inchae ekato makoskolomba, batuba rutuaka yonatabe.
They taught a lot of silly things. I've got two children in school.
Bana barona, barutuwa ntozena tazidis namulemo.
But they are not taught about fire protection.
Habalu tuika mollo, hori mollo oluansajuan.
Should fire protection not become part of life orientation?
Maralebo ni mollo eh tabaya ya hurutavanaka mollo eh tlamilebe karolo ya 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 tsumulo ya ya tutu ya bona.
I would also like to make mention that our local police is not interested in arresting arsonists.
Eh, juali he.
And it is a big problem.
Le batubaba etzamelue habatsuar.
Oh, please don't even report a felled fire.
Mapodisi, wasapa poanesa, ai ai reportilita be ya horo hono uchaka.
I also hear that there's a difference between a felled fire and a fire in settlements. And for that, I would like to remind this meeting that there is also the Fire Brigade Service Act of ninety-nine of nineteen eighty-seven. And that it is two different laws, two different acts.
Ukwi le, ukwi le kamelo ya ya mi kuku, le melo ya eh ditlaha. Juali molau, okay, poto eh, ke melo nideki kozake molau moani, oru buankawanau.
And that's why the Fire Act one oh one of ninety-eight provides for a felled fire act and then the Fire Brigade Service Act.
Eh, eh, molau oannteitouana ubua ka hori, ho tlamile honne le ba eh eh ba ba loansamolo. Boyaka molau, batlamilo honati.
There's something I would really like to tell you. I am a cheerleader for the fire people in Mukaka Fire Protection Association.
Eh, na ki 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 kera tabatuba baba loansamelo, ibile ken na kebaitele zipili mo, mo, mo Mukaka.
Mukaka.
Oh, you're naive.
Um, in, in Afrikaans we say alas, astars.
Oh, eh, babotloka tadabatuba, ka Africans, barba astars.
The, there are, the people in the Mukaka Fire Protection Association are people that look after their community, that take care of each other.
Batubamo, ba 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 mokachonku buankawanau, baxo kumete batubabona, kane tebaba tusa tad.
And I am often deeply touched by the way they sacrifice to keep the community safe.
Ke katse, banka mama ikutlo katsele, ba ba banalebu inel, oka demo, mo tsepetzo nyabo na eh.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Ke lebo eti, mu nyetla ona.
I, I know you have got much more to say.
Please, please carry our voice to parliament, please do.
Ale nzoila ro na lukwaha leko parlamentongo.
Then, Ms. Fenter, you can submit also in writing. I think you have got much more to share as well.
Eba ona lisosungwezing, okana watlisa eh kaurka ha utla karetse di musezo, ke ngata.
Okay, the next speaker, please.
Sivise Latela. Greetings to all the committee members in here.
Kidumele seba itapeneba ro na.
And greetings to all our leadership.
Batu ankaha ra parlamente ya ro na ya naha.
From our, from our national government.
Nakali pito, ki Bibi Mutroong.
My name is Bibi Mutroong.
Ke toa motso wa Villas.
I'm from Villas.
Eh, kenale di ntoanya na kapaditlaiso, kapaditletle botsebatandili maloanyan.
I've got a few points to, to table here.
Ya pile, ke hori, realewa haparlamente ikile empa, ke kopafela hori, hotose sete kitodi bua mo parlamente ha itzama, eskar furala fele di peta halekamora.
I've got some that I'm going to table here. But please, parliament, when you leave, please do something about our contributions here.
Redula Villas eh plan National Road number three, Moeloreng.
We are staying in Villas next to National Road number three.
Moeloreng, Harena eh, batu basewe zang, kaza mollo, kapaa eh ditimamolo, tiaufiyanale ro.
We don't have firefighters nearby.
Di Frankfurt, to Moeloreng otamaya eh di kilometer a raze thirty-six, hoyate.
They are in Frankfurt, where you have to travel for thirty-six kilometers to get there.
Juali, harichellela, okana hana hori thirty-six kilometers eh, gas timamolo setletze me, itzilebatu, setlonkana kuika ufitla kara motso waro.
So, in case there's fire, you can imagine if the, the vehicle has to travel for thirty-six kilometers and there's a structure that is already burning there.
Reasya he, lakemolo like, last year, ekichellete ploto nyaga, hacha, di furuka fele, ampurri du homo di ich.
There's destruction in our fields or areas, yes.
Last year.
Last year, the my animal fodder got bent down completely.
Okay. Juali, limiti ya hacha, no, ke holo ki, limiti ya hacha.
And houses get bent down because?
Ditimamolo di hori.
Firefighters are very far.
Honali ntoengwe ekiluanki poto ya ona hori poseki nzingu ahakara motsoa Villas.
I always ask myself, is my mistake, is it a mistake that I built or I'm residing in Villas?
Kapaa free state iti is sitting di fiin.
Oh, actually, where is free state?
Department of Agriculture itusa, bali tlakore lefi la free state.
Eh, actually, the Department of Agriculture, which, which side of, of free state are they paying attention to?
You can mention hori, hobilele incident ya Estina, hunaldi homu tse fitlileng Estina.
There's an incident eh that happened in Estina, there were cows that were brought in Estina.
You check dwelling, hunaldi puri zekile zafua batut dwelling obatusa.
In dwelling, people were given goats in the form of assistance.
Now, how shareba oyakornelia, hunaldi homu, zela zama China zilenza fitla, wintateba cornelia obatusa.
When you look at Cornelia, there were cows from China that were assisting people there.
Now, poto re botzanki hori, muso aru naa free start, obata hori assista, hori konoe zari job creation, zesiko kara free state kapaa, obata batubaruamba feta na.
So, the question is, is the government of Free State really willing to assist us or it, it just want to assist people who are just passing by?
How taka ra Villas eh, everything ernali nyongo na, from trekereki rekile whatever, hau na mo muso okile ngwata ware, ke bataloli tusaka one, two, three. In fact, Villas eh, hayo, planning ya, ya Department of Agriculture kapaa, muso aru naa u assista.
In short, in Villas, we are not getting any assistance. Eh, I bought my own tractor, but there are no, there are no tools coming from our government.
Why I'm saying that, ke poto or how konahori, o tusaka ra dwelling, diskesa sebeza, ofeta Villas, uyeka ra Cornelia, ntsedisa sebeza, ofeta uyefriere, ntsediso sebeza, ota name Villas otoru assista, two. Hobalin unka fire.
Sorry, intateki, otoro kasu, haketsi wili dro potzena kau Latela, so how bamtelela kutu.
Eh, sorry.
Please, go forward, they have.
Poto kore, how taka dwelling o assista, kadi puri zenga taziskase.
The issue is, when you come to dwelling and give them goats and that project becomes unsuccessful.
You go to Friere Estina, you help them, that project also not successful.
Ofeta uyeh.
Friere Estina, you know.
Uyeh Friere Estina, ebey projecti ayesabe zelimo.
You pass Villas again, you go to Cornelia, the same problem.
Ofeta Villas eh, uyekornelia butatabo wunsebulite.
And when you check in Cornelia, ochecka on the farm star Cornelia, honale batuatswa ankaha ra Bloomfontaine, baba batuwa Velcom.
In Cornelia farm sama from Bloomfontaine, sama from Velcom, but the problem is still the same.
No, they've got farms in Cornelia.
Okay, bua, ke ketsi ba otoro, ita ketsi wili dro potzena.
How shareba, honalebatu, batu ankaha ra Velcom.
There are people from Velcom.
Batu akaha ra Bloomfontaine.
They are from Bloomfontaine.
Ba hau na plasi kara Cornelia.
They own a farm in Cornelia.
Kidula next to the road.
I'm staying next to the road.
Everyone can see the purisa, kadi inkutza, kadi homu tza.
Everyone can see my cows, my cattle, but I don't get the land.
How ya man who, who won't ta demani lefapela L D kapalancho, olu konofu tus.
When you go to the officials to ask for assistance, that is the L D.
A white farmer, he's owning the whole Villas farms.
Mo, mo raplasi, ale monki mona mo buka fele o Villas.
Di plasi zama Spala, te onuanki Maspala, uri lisit.
Farms that are owned by municipality have been listed out.
Dilisueki enama, dilisi hau ya Maspala, ba obulela hori, dilisi ka fele, determinatu, hau na ma nganalindis, mara eh one man.
But when you go to the municipality to inquire about the land, you are told that there's no list, or there's no land that has been listed out.
Mara one man uri o na ka fele.
But empa motuale monki enama ngazo na ka fele.
Utwi lemo to Frankfurt ato, o, ke nakara Villas, abale makara Villas.
Somebody from Frankfurt got into Villas and planted in Villas.
Har ya Maspala, oba bolela hori bona, le shulelo untsaka one, two, three, kenal trekere zaka.
When you go to the municipality to tell them, look, you couldn't assist me, but I've got my own tractors in order to use them for farming.
Ke taiteme.
I'm going to plow my, plant myself.
Nfe lisia piece of land, jualoka ufile yo.
Give me a lease contract of a piece of land, like you did to the other person.
Ke se diya di ma, hau na lis.
Then I'm being told that there's no lease.
Uyachela, uyareporta, ruchellete zabaofi with Baliwa.
You, you, your staff get bent down, but there's still no assistance.
And other thing eh zahalan, every morning eh eh Department of Agriculture eh yezang, honale some of individuals, ba otlaba fumana, baba parlamenti, itzodi sakata di pori, zari inka harazon, mara some of us, rasa zevlo, di fitla jualutze. How, 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 how shareba, the same Department of Agriculture man is so so, bale.
When you look at the Department of Agriculture in Sasol.
Ota twalaba, batu pa parlamenti sakata di pori mona.
You'll find people having eh milli bags or dry millies.
Kana kuwa, uka kamutana lunku, tse three or four.
It's somebody who has got three or four cows.
How zebor, ditlile zwa ngongo di suen, ningwe sa itzi.
You don't know where the, the, when did the registration process take place.
Ntoengwe hapera batanguyokopalo fapa, ke hori, harbatu baborati mo, baputana, bafellamo, renali problem eh.
We, we also don't want to be like subsistence farmer, subsistence farmers, but we want to grow.
Renali problem eh holo ya, ya musebeti karanahaya ro na free state.
There's a problem of high unemployment in free state.
And the same government gazet, eh, repataleba two twenty-one, twenty-three, and something, ah.
The government gazet is stipulating the amount to be paid to the workers.
The same government, hayonor assista hori, ronono ba develop, ronono ira batuamo hai.
The same government is not assisting to develop us so that we can employ the South Africans. That's why we're working with the people from Lesotho.
How checka Eastern Cape?
When you look at Eastern Cape.
Bo kebecha.
Kebecha.
Ba fueri trekere monu, teboma five, six.
People have been given five to six tractors there.
Ba fueri homu monu, raba ba empowered.
They are being empowered by being given some cackle.
Juali, poto ke botzango parlamente ya ro na free start, ke hori ro na.
So, the problem that I'm posing to our free state government.
Refitela jualmo, ruruna rifumaner tusar, ronono tusava.
How do we get to a point where we will be assisted by the government so that we can assist our fellow South Africans?
Issue ya ya mollo.
In regarding the issue of fire.
Mollo, otoru la ochha, reto di ma, because mollo ochisa kiri nyaope, zetletze mo, tesa musebiti.
There'll always be felled fires because there's unemployed people who are drug addicts.
How ka checka di stats, zaba tuaka yonangu di drugs every day.
If you look at the statistics of people using drugs today.
Every day, about thirty to forty percent ya bon ta deba malapaba tsuka di nyaope.
That percentage of men, according to him, are smoking, or are using, are smoking nyaope.
Because, hau na musebiti.
Because there's high unemployment rate.
Renali, diskill si, riwatahu yezza musebitzu, raba taworona, babeli musebitzua bedi joka tumara.
We are skilled in wanting to create job opportunities, but we are not getting assistance.
Komrek, nakia ipo, ah, nakia ipoza hori, hobani minya konyemi harikokota, resabulele ihan.
I always ask myself, why when we knock at other doors, we are not being welcome?
Eh, ngatshaba holo haparlamente, ekafitsheza eh, ditletle botzena zaru na komretisi hori.
I would appreciate if, if parliament can forward our complaints to Messisi.
Sora, premier akari kiala shoong, abona hori, rebata netu yezza ekonomiya ro na free state.
So that the, the premier can take, take our matters seriously because we want to assist the province of Free State.
Eh, engui issue ya ro na ernalin problem kaya ona, kiri employee, te kahari, kamoka Maspala.
We also have a problem with the, the employees inside the.
Kara Maspala.
In the municipality.
Because batuwa deploy iti monu assista, mara so ya mosali deploy ta rounda kasstulo. Ufilar, juali tontsete appointment, te million, mara katsele kamo eno safari kadi popo.
Because the employed people, when we need assistance, they feel that we, we need to make several appointments and they, and?
And hard to say.
But we don't get assistance.
Engui hapera kopalefa, tse kara Villas, rukopa hori.
We also need land in Villas.
Renali ploto te more than fourteen.
We've got more than fourteen plots.
Te onuanki Joni fele.
Owned only by Joni.
Washel.
From Shell.
Reporta hori, the same rate I patalamo, haraka kenyamolo, naraka kono patala, the same rate.
We are asking ourselves, if the same rate is paying, are we going to pay the same rate as him?
One sir kahono, ba jualo, rto kono yezza, creationa musebiti, enar createa musebiti, reta kono patala di services, Maspala no kutama.
If we can pay the same rates, we'll be able to work and we'll be able to pay the rates so that the municipality doesn't collapse.
Eh, ke talosa hori, haraka kono fumana, piece of land, rakhono createa musebiti.
I'm saying, if we can get the piece of land and create jobs.
Reta kono hori, refaba tu musebiti, baba taladi services.
We'll give people jobs so that they can pay the rates so that the municipality can.
Atsota zati administration center ken.
Be out of that process of administration. Then we need to have places to make, to create jobs. Thank you. Greetings to all. My, my, my request is for parliament to assist me with the issue of people who've got the right to hurt others. Whilst them are not supposed to be hurt. My name is Motlalipulian Kavinde, I'm from Mahfube.
Jale, butatavo na, hakinsa ki ma meti mo, rinali, butatavo tsvanani dropokaufel.
As I'm listening to the, to most of the speakers, we've got the same problems in different towns. As it, when it comes to the issues of the farmers. This gives me eh, the idea that black people don't want to assist each other or to see one, some getting rich. We need, our request is to get assistance with the, our children who are using niya opa. Destroying other people's assets in different endeavors that other people are trying to make. Now we are in the winter season and there's fire all over, day in, day out. But those people don't get arrested. Whether they destroy other people's stuff, they can be arrested today, tomorrow, they are being released because it said they are being, um, they are using niya opa, therefore they cannot be arrested. Please parliament intervene with people's complaints. Thank you. Thank you, Intaten Kavinde. The next speaker.
Eh, akelebo eh, kidume dises, chavase mona laba etapelo waro na kaufel.
Thank you, I greet all the people gathered here in our leadership. As I'm standing here, I'm from Ramuluti. In that area, we are complaining daily. Before I go, before I continue, let me explain this. My name is Martha Tlaadi. I'm very much hurt, I don't even know where to start when I talk about the situation in Ramuluti. We are in need of water. You, you, you can't be told or informed on time whether the water will be stopped or not. At least about load shedding, even if we don't have communication gadgets, we can maybe hear from the radio that there's going to be a load shedding. I would like to thank our parliament. For coming closer to us. So that we can table our views. I'm a woman staying alone. I don't have a husband. I don't have a child. It doesn't matter, that's the will of God. But I have a shelter. I'm unemployed. What I want to ask is, to our leadership. Can they help us? Us, the unemployed. Who don't have any form of income. By just giving us small land or to make gardens so that we can eat vegetables. We are very hungry. We don't only see hunger on animals, only because of fire. Even the fire is affecting us. We like vegetables, we are Basoto. Here's another point.
Escom.
Escom. I get annoyed when I talk about Escom. Inside Escom, among the employees of Escom. In twenty sixteen. Electricity was cut off in my, at my place. Because of the person who's working inside Escom. Having tempered with my electricity. At that stage, I had nothing. That six thousand, they were demanding, I don't have it. I didn't have that amount, but my brothers managed to assist me. When I called this gentleman to come and see the mistakes he made. Every time he goes to lunch, up to this day. I sleep on an uncomfortable bed because of him. Can this man bring back my money because I'm hungry now? Because these people who are working, who are educated. I've been robbed that six thousand. I should have used that six thousand to be, to buy a comfortable bed. Because of this man. I don't like this man. Please, I need help. I know his name, even if I don't know his surname. I want my money back because that's him who tempered with the electrical wires. I want to know the cost of this, this, what's costing my bill to be so high? I went to Botaville, head office of Escom. I was crying, I didn't even shower on that day. When they check on the laptop. The outcome of the investigation, the outcome of the investigation was that there was a wire that was connected there. When I asked the Escom employees, how did I, but, how, how did I put that box, that wire in the box? Anyway. They said, these things are available anyway. Then I said, you are taking me for granted. Twenty sixteen, till now. My electricity has been tempered with. I want an interpreter that will be faster because time is running, it's getting late. It's, it's her job, she's used to it. From Ramuluti, please, I, I'm asking for help. Even Mukwena knows me very well. We are hungry on that side. I need to make my own garden. Ke ko pa tu. Mukazane was not here today. He's la- he's a liar. We are like monkeys. These people. We didn't vote for him. I need help, kelapiile. I'm twenty-five fifty-four. Please give me seeds and horse spikes. Any other thing that can be used for gardening. I also love flowers. Akinanex, linka tonawa Escom, majilen six thousand, aketa meki luksteh, jakaleti. Even this man who, who ate my money, six thousand from Escom, you need to give me answers to that. For June's grown, there are no people. The municipalities are alive. Before he could sit on this. Once he's on this seat, on the head going around with it. He doesn't care about you, ghosts. He comes with his big car. He's on that seat because of us. He cannot come and sit here if there couldn't be any people here, never. Even the keeper knows that what they did there is nothing, they made it with some. Can you write? Can you write in the suit and submit your submission? Alright. I'm very hungry, even now, I'm very hungry. Yeah, yeah, I am hungry, Thomas, yes. Therefore. I want you to always contact Mukazane. Mukazane must take care of us, must not take the leadership seat and put it on the head. Before getting into his car, there must be a red carpet so that he can walk on it so that he, he, he doesn't get with any dirt into his own. That cleanliness he's having. We also need that. Like him. Thanks. Thank you. Get the details of this guy where is come, ne, we need to follow it up, ne? This guy of Escom, please. Thank you for the opportunities afforded to me. Greetings to the leadership present here. And the community at large. My name is Paseka Setole from Stensres in Madwantwang. In Mutkaka municipality. I'm, I'm together with those gentlemen who are from Stensres. On the issue of failed fires. It's eh, eh, a general problem eh, throughout the world. You get sad, especially in small places. Because they don't have equipment to, to extinguish it. I request our government that for these small towns, they should do something. Because we have animals. Secondly. It's about our animals. Because we are up and coming farmers who don't have the, the, the opportunity. Those animals are a few in numbers. They don't even grow. But we like to own them because we la- we really love animals. So I would like to, to find out if government can assist us in any way. I, what I'm, the kind of animals that I'm having are pigs. There are two ladies that I'm working with, Me, Elin and Metato. I, I discussed the problem with them. They said they would give us feedback, that is why I thought I should also put my, my, my concerns forward. Since our town is very small. It's stagnant. Most of the things that we had were, were, were brought here in Kronstadt. That didn't sit well with us. Because now if we need anything, we have to travel to Kronstadt. Even when you don't have any money, you have to make some means to get to Kronstadt. I would therefore appeal for our government that some of the things be taken back to the small towns. There is no way that everything should be in Kronstadt. Then we, the site, my next issue is about the site.
The site, yes.
Most of the services in Stensres. The list is being halved and then brought here to Kronstadt. And then people in Stensres do not have a site, all of them.
Hona didi dump inside?
We also have dump inside.
Dump inside is, kalemo sesi.
In another year, in one meeting with Ntate Isma Hasule. We showed him those dump inside. They have since been there. We requested him to transform those dump inside to the sites because there are many people outside. Even now, nothing is happening. Please, our leadership, can you look at that as well? We have EPWP people and it's true, they are working, they are doing their job. But the township is still dirty. Please also look into that as well. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ntate Setole. Thank you, Ntate Setole. The next speaker. Greetings to the leadership. I'm from Ramuluti. We are here about this, the problems that we are having. So that our leaders can hear what our problems are. Those old houses that were built in Ramuluti. And the toilets, they are falling apart, they are leaking. And the roads are also in a dilapidated manner. In our yard, water is, there's water that is not flowing well. I apologize for having not mentioned my name. I am Agnes Hasule. From Ramuluti. I don't have much to say. Yeah, I only had an issue about leaking houses and toilets. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone who wants to speak or let me know? That side. Are you covered? I'm covered. Okay. Sure. Greetings, leadership. My name is Musia Mercedes from Madwantwang in Stensres. I support the bill wholeheartedly. Hoping that it will work for us. Let me start with me first. The municipality where I reside. Does not take care of the citizen. I stay in my neighbor's village. Even now, you will find the situation as it is. There is still sewage running everywhere. There is no way, there's no time where the municipality will come and check my complaints. I even hate to go to the municipal offices. Because you go there happy and come back disappointed. Let me pass that point. Let me make aware my leadership and all that are here. Everyone who's wearing something in here. The power of those clothes that you are wearing is from the grass. Once the grass gets bent. We won't have anything to wear. Meaning that we'll all be naked? Because it's because of the animal's skins and the wool that we have clothes. Let me pass that one. There's a new settlement in Madwantwang. There are no toilets, there's no water in that settlement. Now we are using the old bucket system. The stench that is coming out of that settlement. It's really disheartening. Please, can this bill be useful to us? The next issue. Oh, I have animals in the municipal land. But I cannot extend my animals because the land is too little? Whether I like it or not, I have to reduce my animals? What should I do in order to get a larger land except the municipal land? Once you go to the municipality requesting another land. You come across criminals in that office. They will tell you that you must pour them petrol so that they can go to Sasol back? Only to find that they are still around. They haven't gone to Sasol back. We've made many proposals. They are still there in the municipality offices in Kronstadt. How, what should I do in order for me to own some land? Because I want to create employment. So that I can give the unemployed some work. I don't need job. I want to create job. Thank you so much, my leader. Please listen to everything that has been said here. Thank you. We are indeed listening to you, that's why we're here. Greetings to the leadership. And I appreciate your presence. I'm Lea Rantaille as the name. I'm from Dumahule, Paris. Let me start with the parliament. That has hosted us today. I don't know where to start. I think you as leaders, you know how important breakfast is to everyone, even to schoolchildren. The white lady has explained that most of people who are working with fire are volunteers. Who don't have any income, what they receive is just an appreciation letter. You are being told that you'll get transport somewhere else. We left our houses at seven o'clock. Some of us are suffering from sugar diabetes. This is the second function that I've attended. Previously, we were at Frankfurt. When we entered in the door, there was a fruit and water that was offered to us. I think even you leadership, you are having some snacks right now. So for us, since seven. Since seven o'clock in the morning, having eaten nothing with a stipend of four hundred rand, really is not good. Can that please be taken care of? Next time, we will not even bother to come to this event. That is why we are not even here, all of us, we are still angry. I support the bill. I suggest that there should be a policy of people whose assets are bent down. Because most of them are poor people who live in shacks. The policy, the policy will even compel firefighters to come quickly when the incidents are being reported. Because I don't think, it's not all the places that don't have firefighters, in Paris we do have. But sometimes when they come, they say they don't have a pump. Everywhere they go to, it's, everything has been bent down already, there's nothing they do all the time when they come to a scene. Recently, an old man has died due to fire in his shack. We have a common age in Dumahule for, since two years now. But the municipality doesn't want people to stay at that common age. Please, we want. We want your assistance, we are being threatened that the residents will come and evict us there. We also need assistance about fencing the common age and other funds. I think for the next public hearing, maybe the department of agriculture should be present because most of the concerns that were raised concern the department of agriculture. Thank you. We have heard you. Say, you said you forgot something. Give you two minutes, if you cannot exhaust that, within two minutes, you can do a routine some machine.
Thank you, Jay. I, when I prepared my speech, I did not hear what my fellow farmers here say. When you have one cow or one sheep, you are a farmer. I'm also a farmer. I can hear that the farmers don't have equipment there on the common age. And I want to propose a solution for that today. There is newer ways of fighting a fire. We've got blowers that you put on your back and then you blow the fire with wind, very fast wind. So. Houtfeld has got the best price for a blower in South Africa. So my suggestion is that the farmers, the small farmers, one blower is costing eight thousand five hundred. So if there's a few farmers, a few cattle farmers, they can buy that together or actually I want the parliament to buy or the government to buy that firefighter for ten small farmers and then they can. We must change our way of thinking, we must not wait for the municipality to fight our fires. When you are a farmer, you must be a firefighter. And there I want to extend my help to my fellow farmers. If they buy, if they can buy the equipment. I will train them for free. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you so much for your inputs. And then they were very constructive. And then we learn every day. I think in the next public hearing, we'll have to invite all the relevant sector departments. That proposal by AOC from Paris. They are already sent them, because we've then started, we've arranged lunch for you, but we realize now it's thirteen thirty-nine. And some of you definitely traveled from very far away in the morning. The beauty about it, our managers are here, they'll look at that proposal to see how we do then maybe put food parcel earlier. We planned that we're gonna finish here by two. And then, understanding that we're starting at after ten, everybody will have catch up something at home before they leave. The intention was not to stop you, want to apologize. But the way I understood, AOC is the stipend that she gets.
But the way I understood AOC is the stipend that she gets of four hundred rand. That she can't even buy breakfast. That's a policy matter that we need to further engage with the department. But then there are issues that, uh, service delivery related, we're gonna write a covering memo to the premier, S P U R request. And then we'll expect the matter to get the attention of the province. Is the matter we can follow up on your behalf because we are public representatives. Then I'll put the acting mayor on the spot now to talk to the issues that we raised that are service delivery related. But there are other municipalities that are not here. Mafube, there's a lot of issues that have been raised on Mafube local. And the other one is Muate. I heard something from Muate municipality. Is the matter that we are going to write the covering memo to the respective mayors to respond to those issues. I believe all the speakers that were speaking here, you put in your names and contact details. So the, our committee secretary will be able to give you feedback on the matters that will have followed up. Having said that, let me hand over to the acting mayor, M M Sinzala, to deal with some of the issues. I wonder are we going to deal with your own mayor carrying the chair? I don't know how you're gonna deal with that.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, for the opportunity. I, I'm going to try and, uh, respond to most of the things that were raised in this house. But I must say that I'm, I'm quite impressed by the fact that, uh, the community members who raised issues also proposed the solutions. And it makes my job easier because I just have to implement what they are proposing. Uh, the most common issue is the issue of the common age. Uh, maybe combining it with, uh, Chair, the issue of availability of land. Uh, this has been a problem for the municipality in terms of managing the common ages. Because you find that, uh, it is not controllable and it is not properly controlled. There are laws and legislations that we need to adhere to most of the time. And I think we'll be glad if you can have people that are willing to, to serve in these committees so that they can help the municipality manage better the common ages. Ntatheteguana Rampore from Stensres. I, I, I note your issue and I think it was also raised by, uh, Ntathemariti. Uh, that there's a very serious lack of firefighters. And it is true. Uh, the fire engine that we're having is in constant, it's only one fire engine. That is expected to save three towns. That are in the, in the radius of about sixty kilometers each. Uh, this truly will explain that it is a very serious, uh, uh, baggage on, on, on our firefighters. Uh, we do have a fully, uh, competent staff. But this thing, uh, uh, honorable Chair, is, is a problem because the disaster used to belong to the district municipality. Only two years ago that, uh, during COVID, that we established a, a sort of a fully fledged disaster management structure. So this also may not be an excuse, but it tells you that we, we are still trying to get where we want to be. There's a small, uh, van that is used for firefighting. That is going to be deployed in Fijonskron. We are starting with Fijonskron because Fijonskron is the second biggest. But the aim is to have another one that will go to Stensres. But we cannot only deploy, uh, those things there without training people. Uh, May Lisa Fenter has extended a, a hand through Maka Fire Protection Association that they are able to have. And I wish maybe after this deliberation, but also it will be easy because, uh, as you say, Councillor Spasky is part of you. So it will be easy to facilitate it, to facilitate it with him so that we can see how together we can be able to train people so that when you deploy that equipment there, people are able to. Uh, I think also we need to maybe find a mechanism of funding, uh, such initiatives. And also make sure that this, uh, kind of trainings are also accredited. Uh, the issue of land is important and I noted. Uh, and I noted. Uh, Monica Ranue from Fijonskron. Uh, you raised an issue of fleet, uh, that only comes when, when there's a funeral of leadership or when there's leadership event. Chair, there's a very serious problem with, with our fleet in the, in our municipality currently. Uh, yellow fleet that we, 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 we intended to purchase, we had a very serious legal problems with it. It is a huge fleet of about, of over hundred million that was supposed to be purchased. And, uh, this shows that there's a very serious need of fleet in our municipality. We are anticipating for the case to end sometime in July so that we can continue with acquiring such yellow fleet. So that the, the residents of Ramulutie Constat and Stensres can be able to be assisted. Uh, there's issue of water cutoffs. Uh, the issue of water cutoffs, especially in our municipality here, in most of the time is emergency situations. Where we have a, where we'll have a pipe burst. And by the time we try to communicate already, the water is off. Maybe there are exceptional situations like when we had, uh, the floods. Uh, where we had our pumps at the pump station maybe subsiding underwater. And we are glad that this ex- uh, exceptionally happened in Fijonskron. Uh, in a few weeks, in a few weeks, uh, I think in the past few weeks, we managed to, uh, now solve that problem. Uh, we have secured a, a, a floating pump.
Which will be, which will be, uh, uh, we will be floating on top of the water.
So that it does not, most of the time when we have heavy rains, it goes down under the water. So that it can help, uh, with that problem. Uh, some of the issues, uh, are the issues of other municipalities and I also have noted them. I'll speak to my colleagues in those areas. Uh, Metla Di Martha. Uh, twenty-five fifty-four Ramulutie, I, I even took your address, Mama, because. Uh, I heard your issues.
You asked for a seat.
And the issue of Escom also need to be followed up and the guy who ripped you off. I'm going to request your world councillor to attend to your issues.
What I won't be able to resolve is the issue of the. I will not get into that part, please. But once I meet the mayor. I will tell him that. Please, he should take off that seat. I, I want to thank you, the, the residents of Mutaka. I've noted the issue of Siwaspilish. Please, can you please come to my office tomorrow so that the, the matter can be addressed? Even now, after, after, after this meeting, you can just approach me so that we can see what we can do about your issue. The dilapidated house?
Uh, we, we, we are currently busy with the database of dilapidated houses. Uh, because the premier has committed to rebuild those houses. I, I'm not sure if this information has filtered down to Fijonskron. But I'll speak to the relevant councillors around that issue. So that they make sure that we are being assisted.
Thank you, Chair Preston. There was one interesting point, uh, acting mayor raised by the Secretary of the Fire Protection, uh, May Elise Fenter. She emphasized the role of world councillors. And I found it very profound. I wish if we can calculate such culture to all our councillors. Uh, this world would be a better place to live in. We have ca, we are almost getting close to the end of our program. I want to just hand over to my colleague. Uh, Honorable Mudise. Then he's gonna render the closing remarks in the way forward.
Chair President, thank you very much. Dumelamba Haid.
Greetings to you all, my people.
I, I'm sure you all wanted to hear my voice. Yeah, uh, uh, here it is. Uh, greetings to honorable members and yourself, uh, acting mayor. I want to take this opportunity on behalf of the committee. To express our greatest gratitude to the people of Mutaka municipality. Um, this is a continuation of a journey. Uh, we started in, in Zastron, uh, two days back. Yesterday, we were at Putadi Chava. This morning, when you wake up, we are here in Mutaka. Uh, in the next two weeks, we are going to the Northern Cape. We will be visiting all the provinces, uh, in the country. To consult on this bill. And this is not a tick box exercise. We, we take, uh, note of all the inputs that you have made. And some of the issues do not fall squarely within our, uh, scope of work. But because we are a body of parliament. We have a responsibility to then, uh, designate some of the issues to relevant portfolio committees. As, as the deliberations were going on seated here. We, we, COCA has then agreed amongst ourselves that. Uh, going forward, that, forward, it's going to be important to invite all the stakeholders. So that if there's an issue of Escom, Escom must be here to respond. If there's an issue of transnet and roads and everybody else, they must be here to respond. If there's an issue of transnet and roads and everybody else, they must be here to respond. Because we don't want you to see us on TV and start pointing fingers. They came once and ran away. Yeah, so we want to bring them here so that they can respond and commit to solve the issues that are affecting you on daily basis. We're happy that, uh, the acting mayor is here. We have, we have had him. He, he has committed. We will follow up with him too. Ntabelia's tool or you really.
And that issue of the, the seat or the chair, we have heard about it.
We'll also follow it up. And Chair Guru, what is the story of the chair on top of the head? But we want to assure you, the people of the Free State, that the issues that you have raised from Stensres and all these areas are noted. The battle on the amendment of the National Feld and Forest Fire Amendment Bill continues. We're doing it not only for ourselves as a committee of parliament. We're doing it for the people of South Africa. After these consultations. There is another House of Parliament called the National Council of Provinces. NCOP, Leona, we will take this bill to them. By process, katela zaboona. From there, it will be given to the president. To ascend and make it a law. And once it's a law. It is binding on all of us. And we are happy emerging from all the speakers here. All the speakers are giving the bills a thumbs up. So it means that we are going to take full responsibility once it becomes an act of parliament. With that being said, we are happy to be here.
You know, we love you, Mos. I'll give you the numbers of honourable Paulson.
Yeah, he's readily available for any other engagement. Thank you very much, Chairperson.
We have come to the end of our session. You have been thanked by my colleague. Uh, there's food arranged outside. Uh, because return me like a mo. So it means those ones from this side will be the first one to go, pick up their food parcels, the middle row and the last row.
Because you started from this side, it means from that side you'll be the first to go up and get your pa-, your food parcels.
We want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts for you taking time this Sunday. Thank you so much.